All right, this is the special meeting of the, on June 29th, 2021, of the Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, we've got a couple of really interesting things going on tonight. First is the hearing for citizens present to address the board about the budget and proposed tax rate. Are there any comments to be made on this, Ms. Whitaker? Hearing none, we will move forward with that. Are there any public comments in general? Hearing none, we'll move forward with that as well. All right, we are now to the consent agenda as presented. Is there anyone that would like to motion that the consent agenda be approved? Or is there an item you'd like to pull?
I'll move to approve consent agenda as presented.
All right, is there a second? Ms. Portman, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstained, the consent agenda passes. We're now on to action items, item 6A. Consider approval of vendor to conduct stakeholder engagement and satisfaction survey. Dr. Morrison?
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. We, throughout the process of developing the strategic plan and the accompanying balanced scorecard, that will be a vibrant part of our board meetings in the upcoming year, have constantly talked about the need to populate that, with authentic data, data that is not being provided by the district but is being provided by third parties. And much of that balanced scorecard rests with survey data. And so the decision of securing a group that would do comprehensive surveys, that would give our employees and our community a sense of competence, that we're going to be benefited by their wisdom and their thoughts, even if we don't necessarily like what they have to say to us, the data is what is important. And so Justin Moreno is going to go through our process of selecting a vendor to do those surveys and to give you a little bit of insight in terms of who we are recommending for your approval tonight.
Yes, good evening, Board and Dr. Morrison. This really was a month, months-long process that started with the strategic plan. As we worked through our key performance indicators, we realized that we needed baseline data to really set where we're starting and to identify how we want to grow in various areas, like customer satisfaction with district departments and percentage of parents, students, and staff who feel safe at school, for example. And it was important for us, as we worked through this process, to identify a third party to conduct the surveying. As, in the past, we heard through our discussions with Task Force Committee members for the strategic plan, that internal surveys conducted in the past were sometimes viewed as potentially biased and potentially results being doctored. And information shared by staff members wasn't always kept confidential. And over the years, we have staff members that are now hesitant to respond to surveys. And we certainly, moving forward, don't want to have that perception any longer, which is why we felt it was so important to move forward with a third party. We want to instill a psychological safety that staff can share honest and authentic feedback to us and really build greater participation in these surveys. So, we opened, this was an open process. We issued an RFP earlier this month. It was posted on the district website for the required number of days, closed on June 23rd. We notified 11 possible vendors of the opportunity. We ultimately received responses from three national companies. And after scoring the responses, we are recommending partnering with K-12 Insight to conduct this surveying. We got input from members of the Communications Task Force Committee. As I said, this was something that was discussed over several months during the development of the strategic plan. K-12 Insight is a national public education consulting firm that specializes in improving customer service and stakeholder engagement with, between stakeholders and school districts. They work with over 500 school districts across the country, including several in Texas, KDISD, Hays Consolidated ISD, and Leander ISD, for example. So if you do, if you do accept our recommendation, our baseline survey would be conducted in September. The group would work with us on crafting the survey questions to get the answers and the responses that we're seeking to identify for the strategic plan. And then, moving forward, the survey would be captured in May of '22, '23, and '24, as we progress monitor the strategic plan.
Board members?
Yeah, I was gonna say, how are they gonna arrive at this data? Like, what kind of sampling methods are we gonna use?
We would look at the KPIs that require baseline survey in the strategic plan. We'd model questions for parents, staff, community members, students, where we're measuring. And then we would look at the percentage of responses.
So more than just staff is being?
Yes.
Understood.
So, Mr. Moreno, they are not just providing us with an off-the-shelf solution, they're kind of catering a solution for us?
Yes, I mean, this is, this is what, this is what they specialize in partnering with school districts in improving and enhancing stakeholder engagement.
One of the things, Dr. Fuller, that will be exciting is, we're obviously, we have our KPIs and we're saying, this is the target we're trying to reach, did we reach it, did we not? But because of their work nationally, we'll also be able to say, well, is that an appropriate target? And how are other districts responding? And, you know, is there a district that is outperforming us in terms of, do employees recommend that this organization is a great place to work? Or another school district that has a higher percentage of staff and students who feel safe at school? And, you know, you have to be humble in this work. You don't get to be premiered by thinking you have the answers. So if there's other districts who are asking similar types of data, and their data is more robust and positive than ours, then we're gonna go learn. But when you ask questions at board meeting, well, should we be excited about this data, even if we're hitting our targets? We'll be able to have a little bit more of a national scope to be able to answer those questions.
Looking at the, the pricing tabulations, it says on the motion, 40,000, not to exceed 40,000, is there some variable cost in there? I mean, I'm looking, it's got it broken up pretty well, so I'm guessing if we recommend or want them to come by for an extra day, or another group, that's just an extra cost? Okay.
Yes, the first year, because we're doing two surveys, there will be an additional cost for the second survey, but moving forward, it would be roughly half the price.
Okay. And the other part, too, that will be exciting is, we'll get district-level data, but then we'll also be able to disaggregate it and break it down for the schools. And so there'd be an opportunity for a principal to be able to say, okay, that's how the district did, but how do I compare to my peers in the district? And again, the best place to learn is right here at home. And so we're excited about the ability to disaggregate the data by campuses.
Any other questions? All right, is there a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion to approve K-12 Insight as the district vendor to conduct stakeholder engagement and satisfaction surveying services.
And a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Dennison, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstained. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moreno. All right, next, consider approval of Budget Amendment Number Five. Mr. Lynn?
Good evening.
Yes, this is our final budget amendment for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year. And so it's laid out for you in your board packet. We just ask for your approval.
Board members, are there any questions?
Assuming no audit adjustments, this will be the final presented numbers, give or take?
This is the final amended budget, but obviously, as we go through the audit process, there will be some adjustments to that.
All right, are there any motions? If there are no further questions, any motions?
I'll make a motion when I can find it as written. Oh, I could, I move to approve budget number five as presented.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Portman.
You could've done that without looking, maybe.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstained. That motion carries. Thank you. And last but not least, on our action items, consider and adopt the 2021, 2022 General Operating Budget and Other Budgets.
Yeah, Dr. Fuller, before I pass it over, my friend and colleague, Chris Lynn, this is, in some ways, both the most boring thing that we should be presenting to you this year and the most exciting. It's the most exciting because it's the budget. It reflects our priorities, it reflects how we are being entrusted by the community to use the resources on behalf of our students and staff. That's extremely exciting. It should be the most boring thing because there should be absolutely nothing that you have not seen, heard, had an opportunity to provide input for. And quite frankly, anyone in the community has had multiple opportunities, and that is by design. We, it's much like we've talked about with evaluations. An evaluation is not an event, it's a process. And by the time you're sitting down to talk to someone about their evaluation, there should be no surprises. Because if it's good, they should know it's gonna be good. If there's a challenge, they should know ahead of time. And the budget process is much that way. I want to compliment Chris Lynn because I have a desire for transparency, as you well know, in lots of public engagement. And I've had to sometimes convince CEOs and CFOs of the wisdom of that. And that did not need any convincing with Chris. As we started to talk, we realized our shared philosophies about wanting to engage, wanting to get that public transparency, it makes the work harder. But ultimately, as we're presenting a budget to our board tonight, I think more rewarding. And I just want to thank Chris because there's a lot of CFOs across the country who would say, can we take a shortcut here? Can we not do that? And every step along the way, Chris has not only been absolutely supportive of this approach, but leading it, so.
Mr. Lynn?
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Morrison. As he said, there's nothing new tonight. We're gonna continue to hear exactly what we heard last time. And so, as he talked about, budget plays a huge role throughout the district. Obviously, it's a major focus of our strategic plan that was adopted last meeting. And so Goal Three, Finance and Operations, specifically Performance Objective Two, utilizing a transparent collaborative budget process culminating in the adoption of a balanced budget. And we'll get there in just a minute. As he talked about, this is a process, not a single event. So this is the most boring event of the process. Throughout this process, we've collected a lot of data, we've shared a lot of data with you, we've given you salary comparisons to neighboring districts, we did a third-party staffing review, we involved our principals, senior leadership, in every decision that was made going into this budget. We've had a comprehensive communication plan, we've two community budget town hall meetings, we've had budget roadshow meetings at the campuses, individual meetings, and then obviously, we've had budget workshops with the Board of Trustees. Once again, I'd just like to educate as we go through this process. And so the reason we're here tonight is because our fiscal year begins on Thursday, July the 1st, and goes through June 30th. As I told you last time, the budget must be prepared by June 19th, which it was. And tonight, you were legally required to adopt three funds, the General Fund, Child Nutrition, and Debt Service Fund. And so here are those three proposed budgets. As we start, on the left, General Fund, that is, once again, the general maintenance and operation funds of the district. That's what allows us to do our daily activities. We are asking you to adopt revenues of $79.5 million and expenditures of $79.3 million. And so we do have net revenue exceeding our expenditures of $284,000. So you do have a balanced budget being presented to you this evening. Student nutrition, once again, $4.7 million in revenues compared to $4.6 million in expenditures, excess revenue of $103,000. Debt service, $24.1 million, as opposed to $23.6 million in expenditures. Once again, another balanced budget. As we look at the revenues for the General Fund, once again, just to try and help educate, we get revenues from three general sources in our General Fund, local sources, state sources, and federal. The, in Montgomery ISD, local sources make up about 84.5% of all revenues. And once again, that's made up through property taxes, tuition and fees, other local revenues, and athletic activities.
Mr. Lynn, can we stay on that one for a second?
Yes, sir.
Just, again, having shared philosophies that we have, plus I think the direction that this board has set, did we maximize the overall estimate of enrollment? In other words, did we bet high on enrollment?
No, sir. We took a conservative approach to our enrollment projections.
Did we bet high or low on anticipated state revenue?
Once again, we are conservative in our approach.
And in terms of our local funding source, did we take a high approach to estimated revenue from local property tax, or did we take a more conservative approach?
No, sir, we took a more conservative approach.
So there's every, I feel like I'm in court. So there's every reason to believe, kind of are, right? Court of public opinion. So there's every reason to believe that actually there will be more revenue coming in as we go through the budget process next year than we are currently showing here.
That is our anticipation, yes, sir.
Why is that? Because we went conservative?
Yes, sir. Tongue-in-cheek aside, I want to say thank y'all for taking that philosophy. That helps us a little bit with being able to plan things out and, you know, gives us a picture of the overall health of our district is improving. And so I want to say thank y'all for taking that approach, but also I know there's been a lot of hard discussions and decisions, so thank y'all.
And so as we drill down on the expenditures just a little bit, once again, to try and help educate, I think it's important to understand that roughly 80% of the district budget goes to support salary and benefits of employees. And once again, that is common across districts throughout this state, so that, that's a very common number, followed by professional and contracted services. And then, to get down just to another level, as you look at the programmatic levels of the district, basic educational services, career and technology, special education, you can see how each one of those different programs are funded throughout the district as well. So, once again, no new information tonight. Next steps, obviously, here in a few minutes, I'm gonna ask for you to adopt these three budgets so that we can continue with our work starting July 1. But after tonight, we have a couple of upcoming steps. Tax rate adoption, obviously, that's an important item, and that will occur either in August or September. And at the August meeting, we will be having a discussion with you about ESAR funding. There's a number of ESAR funding sources, ESAR 2, ESAR 3, and we've been fortunate enough to receive some ESAR supplemental funding. And so we'll lay out that funding plan for you at the August board meeting.
All right, gang, is there any, are there any questions over the budget? And, not just tonight, but the months of discussions we've had? I say that because I want anyone that watches the video to know that we didn't just sit down and say, oh, it sounds like a good plan to pass a budget tonight. We've been working on this for many months, Mr. Lynn's been working on it for many months. And so hearing no questions, I'd ask, is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt 21, 22 General Operating Child Nutrition and Debt Service Budget as presented by Mr. Lynn.
And any seconds?
A second.
Ms. Portman? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstained. That motion carries. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're moving on to information items. First up, we have item 7A, update for the 21, 22 school year.
So, Dr. Fuller, as I just said, this was one of our more boring presentations in terms of budget, but I think this is one of more exciting presentations about looking ahead to the 2021, 2022 school year. Not that the 2020, 2021 school year was boring, but as I think back to about this time last year, our conversations were around, were we gonna even have school? Was it gonna all have to be virtual? Were our students and staff ever going to come together? Mask mandates, COVID, contact tracing, that dominated our discussions. And it was what was needed. I could not be prouder of our district and how we weathered those and educated the vast majority of our students for in-person learning. But as we look ahead to the 2021, 2022 school year, we're excited tonight to present to you some of our plans for opening up school in a much different way than we had to last year. So with that, I'd like to present Dr. Amy Busby.
Yes, and I have memories of all those planning that we did. We were not doing those plans in June. That was some last-minute planning that we were doing. So we're very excited to be able to talk about plans for 21, 22 in June, so that we are well-prepared for the opening of school. So first, let's talk about remote learning. That was a big challenge that we had to face, and I think we did a pretty great job addressing those challenges this year. We were fortunate that the state did fund options for remote learning so that we were able to provide that service. However, this year, during the recent legislative session, there was no new bills that were passed that allows for that funding to be continued. So therefore, in the 21, 22 school year, there will not be any remote learning options offered. We will be more than happy to welcome all of those students back to in-person learning. And so we did end the year with 94% in-person, so we feel like that was a very high number ending the year. And hopefully, over the summer, we'll have that remaining number that we're already to come back. Other things we wanted to talk about, health protocols. We did a lot of discussion about that last year. There are some things that will continue. We will continue to ask people to screen, be thinking about, do you have any of those symptoms, like fever, loss of taste or smell, cough, difficulty breathing, those same things? And just, you know, if you do have those things, you know, stay home under those conditions, don't enter a school building or transportation. We also want to continue good hygiene practices that help protect themselves and others from not only COVID, but any infectious diseases. So that would be the hand washing, your respiratory etiquette, use of hand sanitizer stations, all of those things. And we do want to encourage that with our employees, students, and visitors to follow those health protocols. So there was a governor's order that said school systems cannot require students or staffs to wear a mask in the future, and I don't think that was the intent of our district or the board anyways. We, it does say for school systems should allow those who want to wear a mask the ability to do that. And of course, we fully support that in our district. We really want to build that culture of choice. If you want to wear one and that's what you feel comfortable with, we're gonna make sure that there are no issues with you walking into a building or a classroom if you choose to wear the mask. So, wear the mask or not, that's up to the individual going forward. Confirmed cases of COVID-19. So TEA is still requiring us to report this. So if we are notified of a test-confirmed case that has been in the school setting, we do have to report that to our local health department, but also to the Texas Department of Health Services as well. Changes, they are no longer requiring us to do the contact tracing. Remember, that was kind of the piece that really kind of put us in a difficult situation at the end of the year. And then there's also no longer requiring the quarantine practices. Once someone is confirmed, you treat it like any other illness. If you're sick, you go home until you feel better. And then also, as a result of that, we no longer have the need to continue our rapid testing clinic, for which is, that's where we had provided the free testing for our students in the district. So that will no longer continue as well. And finally, returning to normal. So we're looking forward to returning to normal. But however, throughout this process, there were several things that we put into place that we decided we liked. There were some things that we learned and that we'd like to continue. So, for example, our pre-K kindergarten, 6th grade and 9th grade, they really got creative with their back-to-school transitioning for those groups of students. So our principals are looking at creative ways of continuing to provide some kind of opportunity to welcome them back in a special way. Also, they want to look at continuing some of the optimized transitions. These were things like directional hallways, that really worked for some campuses. Maybe different ways of doing schedules at lunches, maybe different ways of releasing students, instead of holding them all in the cafeteria for a long length, they realized that releasing them in phases, back to homeroom or first period, was actually optimal for their classrooms. So those kinds of things, they want to continue, put in practice. We also learned a lot about remote options for meetings and communication and parent engagement. So while we're not gonna throw that all completely out, we're gonna continue to use those to increase the engagement in all of those areas. We learned a lot about digital tools, so new instructional tools that we can use in the classroom to support instruction, we'll continue to support and use some of those tools. And then the standard health protocols, like we've discussed, we learned things that can decrease the spread of any infectious disease, and we'll continue to have those good health practices.
So, Dr. Busby, just as I did with Mr. Lynn, I'll put you on the court. Masks are not required in Montgomery ISD next year.
That is correct.
And if an individual staffer or student chooses to wear a mask, we'll make sure it's a comfortable environment.
Absolutely.
And any positive cases of COVID will be treated as any other infectious disease.
Correct.
And therefore, we will not be doing contact tracing or quarantining next year.
That is correct.
But we still ask everyone to do what they always should do, which is, if you're not feeling well, where should they stay?
Yes, if you make sure, if you're not feeling well, stay home so that you don't spread whatever you have.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Busby. And we did want to give a brief legislative update. The legislature recently adjourned Sanaida on Memorial Day, and it feels like just yesterday we were here adopting a legislative agenda. The 140 days certainly flew by. Most notably, SB 1 was the state bioneal budget. If you recall, our top priority in this year's legislative platform was to advocate for public education funding at existing levels that were adopted in 2019, and we should be proud that that did occur this year. House Bill 1525, this was a school finance cleanup bill that quickly turned into a Christmas tree bill in that several items were adopted to it as it moved in the process. Most notably, $430,000 were allocated to Montgomery ISD through ESAR allocation. This, there was monies put into the bill for school districts that received little to no benefit from ESAR 2 and ESAR 3, we were the beneficiary of that. House Bill 3979, this bill has made some recent local and national media, which is the ban of critical race theory. This bill does not impact Montgomery ISD because we follow Texas essential knowledge standards, the TEACs. We do not teach critical race theory in our district. House Bill 4545 establishes some new requirements on star assessment, there is the elimination of retention in grades 5 and 8, and accelerated learning committees to develop individualized education plans. There will be a special session starting on July 6th, the governor made this announcement last week. The agenda, there's widespread speculation what will be on it, but it is not yet announced. It's speculated that the governor will make the announcement on his agenda shortly before the session starts on July 6th.
Great. All right, so now, can I put Mr. Moreno on the court? So, I want to go back to a topic that I'm getting a lot of questions about, and that's critical race theory, and maybe Dr. Weatherly as well. You said that Montgomery does not have elements of that in our curriculum, we don't teach that. Why? And is that something, where does that come from?
Great question. We follow the TEACs, which is the Texas Standards, and that does not include critical race theory.
So I just want to kind of reiterate, underscore that again, I'm getting a lot of questions. That is not a part of our curriculum, never has been. We have not had those elements in our, in our curriculum because we follow the TEACs. And so I kind of want to put that to, out there to the community to hear as well, so that we can kind of address those concerns.
And I think it is appropriate that we are be introducing our new executive director of Curriculum and Instruction, a new position, because we want to make sure that our curriculum is robust and challenging and meets level of rigor that our parents expect and demand in Montgomery ISD. But we do focus on making sure that it covers the TEACs. And when we make changes to curriculum, it's to do things like embracing local history, so doing things like the History Walk Tours with Brenda Bevins, those are things that we certainly support. like the history walk tours with Brenda Bevins, those are things that we certainly support. But we're excited about having this new position, and so, Dr. Weatherly.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Moreno. As a parent of three graduates of MISD, I also did well in the project with Brenda Bevins, and we all passed Texas history together. So, I learned a lot about Montgomery, Texas, back in the day when my kids were going through that, but just to give you a kind of an update of what we're looking at for next year, one of the things that never changed last year, once we passed the operations of how are we going to get kids in school safely, how are we going to get them in the cafeteria safely, off the bus, and the bus rides together, academics still stayed true through all of that, and that is one thing that's never changed. And so I think the two top priorities for any school district when we start talking about will always be safety and academic achievement, and so that's really what we're looking at next year, and just maintaining that focus on our academic and social needs as a result of that pandemic and the learning loss. And so through that, our new curriculum department that's being developed, and we're still going through that, but I stand here as a result of that, and so thank you very much. We have three secondary content specialists. You probably will wonder, what is that? I thought we had coaches. We're changing those over to the specialists to differentiate between that and coaches because at the elementary level, we do have six coaches. Those people are staying the same. We've had two, we're adding the third one through our ESER funds, but they're specialists, they're content specialists because they're not necessarily assigned a campus where our elementary folks are assigned a campus, so that's kind of the differentiation, if you're wondering what that might be. And then also, this year, we're adding a reading academic, academy instructional specialist to the fray as well. And also, as you know, that you voted upon, we have a new director of community services that will also help the social-emotional learning, which is one thing that we really learned about through the pandemic, is the need for that. One of the things the state still said that you're going to do last year and that did not go away was the STAR, and so just to kind of give you just a brief update of where we stand across the state in MISD, they dropped significantly, and especially in areas with high numbers, higher numbers of remote learners. Montgomery had a high percentage of people that were coming to school still, 94%, and so that helps us out whenever kids are out, and when we can see them directly, you never lose that, that personal touch when they're in front of you. And we know there are some learners who do well, but for the most part, we believe that kids do better when they're in front of a teacher and in a classroom and learning from their peers. And so, one of the things that we found out, that math was impacted more than other subjects across the state. We have received our preliminary results, and as Mr. Moreno talked a while ago about House Bill 4545, there's going to be some requirements for some interventions for the students that, who did not perform well as a result of the COVID loss, our slide as it's being dubbed, and so we're going to make sure that we have a plan coming out for that through the curriculum department, to make sure that we're helping our teachers, supporting them who are supporting our students. And currently, we're still disaggregating that data for MISD and starting to whittle down our individual students and where they stand and helping our campuses get through all that and understanding those results and how we can better support them.
And again, just to reemphasize, there's a lot of things that you'll be hearing over the next week or two about state results, and as Mark said, there were significant drops across the state, especially around math. As we're disaggregating our data and engaging our principals, we will present those data to you. We actually see some signs that are pretty encouraging to us, especially around the masters, that are things that we actually feel pretty excited about. I think one of the things that we're still digging into, and it will, it's a little bit, I think, underreported at this time, but the more students who take any test, traditionally, test scores will not be as robust as if you limit the pool, and because of the differences of STAR testing across the state this year, many students did not actually take the STAR test. If those are students who tended to struggle, and they were in a higher percentage of students who did not take the test, then it might artificially inflate a district or school's performance. I think we're going to get a little bit more authentic snapshot of what our data looks like because we did not see a drop of test takers like many districts across the state did. I think, Dr. Busby, it was about 91% of test takers, so again, that's still, you know, almost 10% of our students who didn't take it, so we're, look through all that, that's why we still need to disaggregate the data, but we look forward to presenting it to you. But again, what we can speak to is the state release of data, which shows that there was, in fact, a substantive loss of learning with the quote-unquote COVID slide.
Thank you. Any questions? I would like to say thank you, Dr. Weatherly. Your first presentation to the board, so welcome to Team Montgomery officially now. I do have one just kind of reflection. I'm really proud of the work that y'all have done. Dr. Busby, you opened with things that you've learned, and so I think that shows that we're adopting a culture of being a learning organization that takes these things in strides, learns from them. I'm also proud of the town. You know, we have not always agreed. The town has not seen eye to eye on masks and all sorts of amazing things that we've had to deal with this past year, and so I'm ready to get on to the next school year, and what y'all have presented tonight just makes me more excited, so.
And, Dr. Fuller, we will be sending out a letter to our parents to let them know some of the things we talked about tonight, so to remind them masks optional, no longer doing contact tracing, no longer doing quarantining, some of the legislative updates, and we'll be sending that letter out this week.
All right, thank you. All right, next information item, we have a first reading of board policy update 117. It affects a variety of local policies related to purchasing, facilities, construction, compensation. Anything you want to say about that, Dr. Morrison?
No, Dr. Fuller, this is, you know, these are recommended from TASPI in terms of changing our local policies. We're required to do a first reading, and then we'll come back for your vote at the next board meeting on August the 17th.
All right, so, board members, y'all will likely see that in consent agenda, so just know to look for that in the future. At this time, there are no other information items, no other action items, so the board will go into closed meeting as authorized by the Open Meetings Act. We will be back shortly, just hang in there. All right, we are returning from closed session at 6:10 PM. There are no action items, there's nothing to take action on from closed session, so I will call this meeting adjourned at 6:10 PM.